I'd like to welcome you to the April the 11th County Commissioners, Board of County Commissioners Meeting. And we're going to start it off with an invocation, followed by a pledge of allegiance. Those who would like to join me. Our most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you, Father, for this opportunity to come together as a free people. Father, we pray that in light of choosing to see only the evil that surrounds us at times, that we submit to you, Father, and see the glory that you have surrounded us with, the beauty that you have surrounded us with. Father, as a governing board, we pray for your wisdom, your strength, and your guidance to work toward those things which will greatly enhance the lives of our citizens. Thank you, Father, for the many, many blessings that you brought upon this nation, and this county, and this state. Thank you, Father, for it is in his precious name I pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I should have probably told some of you folks that are here for the first time that the reason that we face that way is we have a flag in the back, and we, prior to that, we were turning our back to you for the pledge, and we didn't feel comfortable turning our back to you, so we had a flag. I see people turn around like, what are they doing?
Okay. Fred, if you would honor our veterans, please.
Do we have any veterans in the audience? You raise your hand. Have you got one of our pins?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. We have started a custom where we recognize veterans, and if there are veterans, we give them a lapel pin that is Davidson County and has veterans on it, a veteran on it as well. So if you see any of your friends that are veterans, if you tell them to come up here to the meeting, then we'll be glad to give them one of those lapel pins. They're nice looking, really. Thank you.
A representative of the Thomasville Area Chamber of Commerce is scheduled to be the council or chamber representative at this meeting, but we have not received the 2022 list of representatives. We have been informed by the chamber presidents that due to the COVID-19, some of the representatives may be watching the live stream to report back to the chamber. Okay. If you have none already, if you want to register for the public address. Okay, we have adoption of the agenda. Due to the anticipated length of the public hearings, I'm asking that they be moved to follow the deliberation agenda. Mr. Fry has requested a closed session for attorney-client be added, and Mr. Smith has requested that a closed session for personnel be added. Are there any other changes to the agenda? If not...
Hearing none, Mr. Chairman, I'm making a motion that we accept the agenda with the amendments.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Shores.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McClure. Cast your vote.
All of the votes are in. And that motion carries by a vote of seven zero.
Okay. Jason, is there anyone?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. We've got no items for decision information consent. Are there any items to remove from the consent agenda for discussion? Not may have a motion and second to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Second. Motion by Commissioner McClure, second by Commissioner Shores. Cast your vote.
Commissioner Watford and Commissioner Yates, can I get your votes, please? All of the votes are in, and that motion carries by a vote of seven zero.
Okay. At this time, we're going to have a proclamation of April 2022. It's Sexual Assault Awareness Month. I'm going to ask Commissioner Watford if she would mind reading the proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate you asking me to do this, as I've served on family services, and I know the good work that they do. This is to be Sexual Abuse Awareness Month, building safe online spaces together. Whereas, April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month, a time to draw attention to the prevalence of sexual assault and to educate individuals and communities about how to prevent it. And whereas rape, sexual assault, and sexual harassment impact our community as seen by the number of Davidson County survivors seeking assistance from their assaults. Whereas, this crime occurs far too frequently, goes unreported far too often, and leaves long-lasting physical and emotional scars. Whereas sexual harassment, abuse, and assault are widespread problems. In the United States alone, nearly one in five women and one in 67 men have been raped at some time in their lives, and one in four girls and one in 20 boys is sexually abused by the age of 17. And whereas sexual harassment, assault, and abuse can happen anywhere, including in online spaces. Now more than ever, screens and technology connect us with others, but for too long, harassment, cyberbullying, and sexual abuse have been seen as unavoidable behaviors online. And whereas each of us has the power to change that, together we can make a difference to build inclusive, safe, and respectful communities that thrive online and offline. And whereas 2022 marks the 21st anniversary of Sexual Abuse Awareness Month, and the theme of this year's campaign is building safe online spaces together. We can build online communities free from sexual harassment, abuse, and assault by practicing digital consent, intervening, and when we see harmful behaviors and promoting online communities that value inclusion, safety, and respect. Whereas, Davidson County strongly supports, in the efforts of national, state, and local partners, and of every citizen, to actively engage in public and private efforts, including conversations about what sexual violence is and how to prevent it, how to help survivors connect with services, and how every segment of our society can work together to better address sexual violence. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Davidson County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims April 2022 a Sexual Assault Awareness Month throughout the county, and urges all the people of the county to learn about sexual assault and commit themselves to the community goal of ensuring that everyone in Davidson County can live their life free of sexual violence. This adopted the 11th day of April 2022, and with this reading, I offer this as a motion to adopt.
We have a motion, then we have a second. And a second. Commissioner Elliott, cast your votes. Mr. Kelly, in the audience?
Can I get your vote, please?
Me again.
No, Commissioner Yates.
Commissioner Yates.
Thank you. All of the votes are in.
Mr. Kelly, if you'd come up, please, sir.
And that motion carries by a vote of seven zero.
He's one of Jason's old hockey coaches. Yeah. Tim Tilly. Well, right there it is. Absolutely. How you doing there, my friend? Thank you. It's a pleasure, sir. Thank you.
One, two, three. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Thank you.
In the proclamation, obviously, the fact that our society is trying to protect and protect the state, we gather, and it is the moment where you all accept up and understand that childrens are protected and served, and have a chance to do something.
You have a good organization, there's a wonderful job, something you've done, but I watch the campus every day, and it's a great job, and...
We go.
Tremendous. Keep it, keep it.
Hi, Daniel.
We have a request to add staff to support environmental health. Mr. Smith, would you?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Lance Lillian Coontz, our Public Health Director, come forward. Public Health received some additional ARPA funds as federal funds, no matching required, $65,000, and looking to add some temporary staff in environmental health. As you guys know, we've got some areas of concern over there in terms of staffing as well, so I'll let Lillian explain all the details there.
Good evening. Thank y'all. Manager Smith teed me up really well. This is an opportunity for some of the COVID dollars that have come down to address workforce issues. What we'd like to do in Davidson County is to use these dollars to hire a registered environmental health specialist technician. That's a position we have not used previously. This position only requires a high school graduate, so a high school degree, and we think that we'll be able to get someone in quickly. The difference is, these individuals will not be able to write permits for on-site, they won't be able to inspect restaurants or things like that, but they can do a lot of the pre-work to help expedite the work that our environmental health specialists can do. We're hoping, too, by doing a full-time and a part-time, that perhaps we can engage with a student in college for the part-time position, and maybe turn them into a full-time registered environmental health specialist once they finish college, excuse me.
Good idea.
Can they use this time for certification also?
You have, for, to become an environmental health specialist, you have to have a four-year Bachelor of Science with 30 semester hours of science in your graduate, in your program set. So without that, you can't even be considered. This is a North Carolina general statute that sets those rules, so we have no wiggle room there. For a part-time position, it's likely that we can find someone who's in college, who's maybe working towards that type of degree, they can get their foot in the door, learn more about environmental health, and hopefully decide to do that as a profession.
But then after they get out of college, what I'm saying, don't they have to have about five years to get certified?
A complete certification takes several years, and authorization takes about from higher, if they have that college degree needed, if we hire them on as an intern, the full process takes about three years. But they can start working for us once they pass their state exam and their state on-site test, and that takes about six months.
Is this sort of like an internship?
Well, it is. Actually, it's interesting, we call them environmental health interns, even the ones that we're hiring currently, but they're paid full-time, but they don't receive that full status until they do a whole litany of things.
Health and Human Services make that call?
No, sir. North Carolina general statutes say that you have to do all this, and then they have to go through DPH and get authorized, so it's very complex.
What I was wondering, and it may be far-fetched, was if we had the legislative backing, could we not make it so an internship draws certain amount of credits?
It is possible. I am working on a state work group right now to look at options. I don't know when North Carolina general statute, NDA, came about, but that's where it's in there, and, you know, we're talking with the state, we're talking with legislators, we want to do the right thing by environmental health and keep the profession strong. As y'all know, septic systems can be complex for homes, and you certainly don't want it to fail. That's when you get in a real mess, literally. So we do want to find a way, though, to open the door to more individuals, Commissioner Shale, and we're working on that.
Okay. Sounds good. Anybody? Got a motion by Commissioner McClure, a second by Commissioner Trow. Cast your vote.
Lillian, just one question.
Yes, sir.
How long is this, is this for? Is this one year, like some of the other ones that we've given you?
Yes, sir. This one ends, we have to have all the funds completed by May of 2023.
And it pays for salary, benefits, it's paying for everything?
Yes, sir. It'll cover everything we're asking for.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Elliot.
And that motion carries by a vote of five zero.
Thank y'all very much.
Seven zero.
Sorry, seven zero.
I will thank you.
Well, I get for trying to write in public.
Okay. Next thing is request for the waiver of CND pallet disposed, or Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Yates can help me out, too, he knows a lot about this, but part of the budget process, I think Charlie was looking at adding a pallet person into the landfill to pull pallets out, because companies are bringing them in, dumping them in there from finding them in construction sites. It's not, it's not legal to put wooden pallets in the landfill without a permit. What we're asking the board this evening is to allow for us to approve a letter to send to ask for a waiver for the county to have for a certain length of time. If not, we're going to have to have a pallet person pulling those pallets out, and we can just dispose of them in the landfill for time being. They're going to ask for a plan to do it over some period of time. We'll come up with a plan at some point in time, but maybe we can buy some time.
I'm good with the waiver. I make a motion that we approve the letter for the waiver.
Second. Any discussion, everybody okay? All right. Got a motion, Commissioner Elliott, and a second by Commissioner Shores. Cast your vote.
The pallet resources, wouldn't be an outlet for that, because they grind those pallets up for malt.
That I'll have to get Charlie up here, or Commissioner Yates may know about it than I do.
The issue is not the whole loads of pallets, there's a couple people takes the whole loads of pallets. What this is, if you're doing a remodel or you're doing a construction site, and they throw one or two pallets in the roll-off, they're rejecting the whole load because it's got a couple pallets.
I understand. Thank you.
The hauler's not, the hauler's not going to be able to go through it, so we either got to go through it or just allow it to be put in the landfill for the time being.
They'll accept metal pallets or fiberglass pallets, but they just don't accept wooden pallets.
Yeah. Well, what is the reason for that?
I said no.
Yes. And that motion carries by a vote of seven zero.
Public hearing. Okay. Trying to find the page. Page five.
Got the man on deck now. The man's on deck.
I'll be here for Project Metal Economic Development Incentive Grant. I declare the public hearing open. Mr. Goodson, if you will come and leave this off, please.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. Tonight, the EDC is requesting approval of an economic development incentive grant for Project Metal. It's existing, long-term, existing industry in Davidson County. If the grant is approved, the company will invest a minimum of $10 million and up to $15 million, plus provide 25 new full-time jobs with an average wage in excess of the county average. The grant will not exceed .0027 times the total of the company's investment in plant and equipment, provided they meet the requirements of the grant, and we would like for the grant to be paid annually over a period of seven years. Be happy to answer any questions.
This isn't, this is not the one we just introduced the other day, right?
We introduced that for a building reuse grant.
Right, but I'm saying this is not the company we introduced the other day. I didn't think so. I thought it was a different.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Goodson?
Kind of want to clarify that for the record.
And the bottom line, Craig, on this, this is a performance-based incentive package.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, as always.
A lot of times, public don't understand when they say incentive, and so I just want to let them know.
They must create...
If they don't produce, they don't get.
They have to create the investment and pay the property tax before they, before this takes place.
Thank you, Chris.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience who wish to speak either in favor of or in opposition to this request? Is there any further discussion by the board? I declare the public hearing closed. May I have a motion and a second to approve awarding incentives to Project Metal as requested and authorize expenditure of county funds for SWAN to the agreement, and also to approve execution of the incentive agreement upon approval of its form by county attorney's office.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion by Commissioner Watford. Second by...
You don't make no difference.
We'll give it to Commissioner Trow.
Okay, thank you. I thought I heard two things that weren't...
Cast your vote.
All of the votes are in, and that motion carries by a vote of seven zero.
Okay. We have a rezoning request by Jimmy R. Walton in Conrad Hill Township, containing 3.37-plus acres from RA3 to CZ8C. I declare the public hearing open. Mr. Crook will introduce the application.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. We have a request tonight by Jimmy R. Walton to rezone property in Conrad Hill Township, tax map fifteen, lot forty-five, and a portion of lot twenty-five E, containing 3.37 acres more or less. Property is located on the north side of East US Highway sixty-four, approximately fifteen hundred feet east of the Smith Farm Road intersection. Rezoning is requested to change from that of RA3 Rural Agricultural District to that of CZ8C, Conditional Zoning Highway Commercial District. Mr. Walton is in the audience. He wishes to establish a zoning district here to create a sales facility and small, low-key maintenance facility. The planning board heard this application on April fifth, and the 3.36 acres that is in the legal was the original request. The planning board made the recommendation, and it is, it is good planning policy to include the septic tank area, which did increase the acreage to 3.68 acres. And Mr. Walton's here, if you'd like to come up and.
Thank you, Commissioners, for your time. Jimmy Walton proposes his own commercial at fifty-two thirty-five East Highway sixty-four. We want to provide a service for, to sell storage buildings, maybe carports. We'd like to have a car lot there as well, and a building for doing minor repairs for the cars that we pretend to sell. Just a small office we're looking at and a shop behind that for, for our business. And our office hours will be from like eight to six, Monday through Friday, and eight to two on Saturday. And I just think this would be, provide a great service for the community, as well as tax dollars and revenue for the county.
Okay, anyone have any question for Mr. Walton? Thank you, Mr. Walton.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of or in opposition to this application? Any questions by the board?
I do have one, Mr. Chairman, if I may. Lee, I'm assuming that's a creek there to the left of that?
Yes, sir, right here.
There's nothing that can, that's gonna be done there that would run off into that creek or could?
That's, that's actually off of Mr. Walton's property. In the planning board meeting, Mr. Walton indicated that out of the three, three point, I think originally three, six acres, now 3.68 acres, he was only gonna clear about an acre and a half of that, is that accurate? So, being off his property, if he does clear over an acre for the purpose of development, he will have to file an erosion control plan with the state of North Carolina.
Fantastic, thank you.
Yes, sir.
What is the entrance, entrance and exit of sixty-four?
It is, yes, sir. It's along East US Highway sixty-four.
Okay.
As a conditional zoning request, there are, I would submit the application as an exhibit, and all of the conditions and uses that are submitted in the application, I would tender as his conditions. And staff did tender a recommendation. This does result, the property is along East US Highway sixty-four corridor, which is recognized by the Davidson County Land Development Plan as an economic development corridor. And as such, we try to promote and support non-residential growth. Policy statements one point one, one point three, one point seven, one point eight, one point sixteen, five point six, and seven point four of the plan support the request, and staff would recommend approval. And ask the board to, if approved, adopt a statement of consistency.
Any further discussion by the board? If not, I declare the public hearing closed. May I have a motion and second to either approve or deny the rezoning request and to adopt the resolution on statement of consistency?
No movement, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion to approve, correct?
Mm-hmm.
All of the votes are in. And that motion carries by vote, seven zero.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. Good luck.
Good luck. Yes, sir.
We have a rezoning request by Darren and Tina Tucker and Betty Cecil in Lexington Township containing one and three-quarters of an acre from CURC to RA3. Mr. Crook, would you introduce the application, clarify the?
Yes, sir, be glad to. We have a request by Darren and Tina Tucker and Betty Cecil to rezone one point seven five acres more or less in the Lexington Township, tax map three oh eight, a portion of lot ninety-two B and a portion of lot ninety-two. Said properties are located on the east side of Cecil Road, approximately point two-two miles south of the Welcome Arcadia Road intersection at five forty Cecil Road. Rezoning is requested to change from that of CURC, Conditional Use Rural Commercial District, to that of RA3 Rural Agricultural District. This property was rezoned, I think back around 2000 for a landscaping facility that, it's my understanding, never materialized. The applicants came in wanting to build a residential structure on the property and found out that it was still zoned Conditional Use Rural Commercial. They would like to, to erase that and turn it back to RA3 so that they can build their house.
Downgraded, I don't see a problem with that.
So, and Mr. and Mrs. Tucker are in the audience.
Sounds like a motion.
Let's go through the process here. Mr. Tucker, anything you wanna say? Okay, all right. Are there any questions by the board? Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of or in opposition? Okay, Mr. Crook, what is staff recommendation on this?
Staff recommendation is to approve the application, since this area on the land development plan is forecasted to be residential. Policy statements six one, six seven, seven three, seven four, and ten point one support the amendment. We would recommend approval and ask that you adopt a statement of consistency, please.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, I declare the public hearing closed. May I have a motion, second, to either approve or deny the rezoning?
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
The rezoning request to adopt the resolution on statement of consistency.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve.
Okay, got a motion of Commissioner Shores? Second, Commissioner Yates, cast your vote.
All of the votes are in. And that motion carries by vote, seven zero.
I apologize, you always been unison since I saw you. Didn't even recognize you when I came up the elevator again.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Good night.
Okay. We have a special use permit, class A, to construct and operate a wireless telecommunications tower and facility in Cotton Grove Township by Ryan Fletcher on behalf of Parallel Towers to Third LLC. Okay. Mister, declared public hearing open. Mr. Crook will introduce the application, provide the instruction regarding the quasi-judicial nature of the proceedings.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do have a request by Ron Fletcher on behalf of Parallel Towers, Parallel Towers Three LLC, for a special use permit, class A, to construct a wireless telecommunications tower and facility greater than a hundred and sixty feet in an HC Highway Commercial District. Said property is located on the east side of NC Highway Eight, approximately fifty-three hundredths of a mile south of the Jersey Church Road intersection. Said property is further described as Cotton Grove Township, tax map eighteen, lots two and forty-one, containing point three-one acres more or less. Since this is a special use permit, class A, and it is quasi-judicial, everyone who wants to speak other than Attorney Karen Camerite, I think, needs to be sworn for their testimony.
Okay, so anyone that wishes to speak in favor of or in opposition, if you step up to the podium, please.
We could put a, we could put one here on the table, too, you know, to see if you can spread folks out a little bit.
Okay.
Do you have enough white paper?
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you shall give to the board shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Okay, Mr. Chairman. This, this, this application is a little bit unique in that, to date, AT&amp;T Wireless already has a wireless telecommunications facility out there, about four hundred feet south of the requested tower placement. So that, to date, we've never, staff has never received a request to just relocate that far when they're already providing the service. So this is a little bit of a precedent-setting application and a little bit unique. And at this time, I would ask Ms. Camerite to come up and then represent the request.
Can you show us where, I see the existing right there, where does the new go?
The new tower's gonna be located right here.
Okay.
The old tower's right there.
Did you say four hundred?
It's around, excuse me, it's around four hundred feet, I think, to the south. Thank you.
Get us some more reading. Is that David Tan, I mean, is that a?
Southwood.
Southwood Elementary?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Counselor, forgive me, I note that something has been shared with the board. Could you provide a copy of that for us, please? No, 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 no. I'm sorry, I don't know what it was, just tender to them. Thank you. And it may be helpful for Lee to have one. Chairman, I apologize, but it's all good for us to read off the same page.
Check out what you deserve.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Karen Camerite, and I'm an attorney with the law firm of Fox Rothschild in Raleigh. And I'm here on behalf of the applicants, that are AT&amp;T Mobility, Parallel Towers, and also the property owners, Christopher Young and Tammy Lerner. And I'd like to begin, I prepared kind of a verbal presentation to explain this, what I believe is well, from what Mr. Crook said, is that this is a, this is a unique request before the county. So I'm gonna spend a little bit of time explaining the reasons for it. So I wanted to begin by thanking you for the opportunity to provide an explanation about why AT&amp;T needs a new tower and why it needs to remove its antennas from the existing Crown Castle Attorney. And then also, I'm gonna spend a little bit of time explaining why the county's ordinance does not prohibit AT&amp;T from doing this. And I believe that our, the application that we presented meets all of the requirements of the ordinance. And I also just wanna begin by saying I've done, over the years, a fair amount of work in Davidson County. And I've worked, the, the planning staff has always been great to work with, and I have a lot of respect in the planning staff, and I've worked with Mr. Frye, and he also, have a lot of respect in him. I think that for this application, we just simply disagree about how the ordinance should be interpreted, which I'll explain in just a couple of minutes. So, the issue that's before the, this board is whether there is anything in the county's ordinance that would prohibit AT&amp;T from removing its antennas from the existing Crown Castle Tower and constructing a new tower so that it can continue providing coverage in the area. And other than, that is the sole issue. I think everything else about the application is not in dispute. That we meet all of the technical requirements of the ordinance, and I believe that we meet the special use requirements of the ordinance. But that is the fundamental issue of disagreement about whether a new tower can be constructed with a, with a Crown Castle that is nearby. And so what, so what AT&amp;T's plans are, is that they are, they have, the existing Crown Castle Tower is located at six zero nine five, North Carolina Highway Eight. And that Crown Castle Tower is a two-hundred-and-sixty-foot lattice tower. And what, what we have submitted an application for is for parallel towers to build a new tower that is granted close to the existing Crown Castle Tower. And this new tower will be located at fifty-nine eighty-one, North Carolina Highway Eight. And it will be, and the, the reason that AT&amp;T is trying to remove its antennas from the Crown Castle Tower is because it's basically being held hostage by Crown Castle. That Crown Castle is charging exorbitantly high rent payments that continue to escalate. And so backing up a little bit about this, kind of this problem of being held hostage, many of the ordinances in the state have a provision that, that basically says, when an apple, when a tower company comes in to, to get approval with a special use permit or a conditional use permit for a new tower, one of the things that the tower company has to certify is that it will make space on the tower available for co-location. And Davidson County has that provision. And then it also has a provision that, that basically says that the tower companies have to provide commercially reasonable terms so that the tower companies can't do what Crown Castle is doing here in Davidson County, which is to say you, we've, we've got the antennas on our tower. We, we say that you can't build a new tower, and we can just continue to increase the rent payments so that they are, you know, exorbitantly high, and there's no recourse. And so some ordinances have, have foreseen that issue and have addressed it through a provision that makes the, the tower company certify that they will provide co-location space at commercially reasonable terms. But Davidson County does not have a similar provision to that. And so, so without, without that kind of provision, AT&amp;T basically has no remedy here. It has no remedy to, to require from a county perspective that Crown proceed in good faith with reasonable rate and lease terms. And so, the only way that AT&amp;T is able to address this issue in the county is that they've come forward, that they want to remove their antennas from the tower and continue to provide service and coverage in the county, but on a new tower that will be commercially reasonable. And so in our application, we've presented evidence about AT&amp;T needing to remove its antennas from the Crown Castle Attorney due to this, this financial situation that I'll just describe as financial hardship that's being imposed upon AT&amp;T. And the ordinance does not, has no prohibition. It does not prevent AT&amp;T from constructing a new tower in this type of situation. So we've submitted an application for a special use permit so that AT, so that parallel towers can construct a three-hundred-foot-tall lattice tower, and so that it can continue to provide coverage in the area. And this tower is also for the first net, excuse me, the first responder network authority that I'll refer to as FirstNet going forward, so that they can provide broadband coverage to the first responders, such as the police, the firemen, and the EMS personnel in the county. And so I wanted to provide just a little bit more information that's included in our package about the site. But the property is located on the east side of Highway Eight, and as Mr. Crook mentioned, about a little more than a half of a mile south of Jersey Church Road. And the property that the, the tower's gonna be located on is essentially, it's two parcels that are owned by the same property owner, and together they make up about four-point-seven-three acres. And the property where the tower is gonna be located is vacant, and it's two-point-nine acres. And then the property immediately adjacent, that's owned by the same property owner, is one-point-seven-five acres, and it's used for commercial purposes. And so what parallel towers will do is they will lease a one-hundred-foot, excuse me, one-hundred-and-five-foot by one-hundred-and-five-foot leased area of the vacant parcel. And that's gonna be about a quarter of an acre. And then the rest of the parcel will remain as it is, it will not be disturbed by the tower. And then there will be a sixty-foot by sixty-foot fenced compound within that leased area. And then around the fenced compound in the leased area will be landscaping to buffer the, the view of the base of the tower. And the tower, the parcel is located in a predominantly commercial and industrial area along the Highway Eight corridor. And the contiguous properties, or the properties that are surrounding it, are a mixture of vacant property, commercial and industrial property, agricultural land. And there is one parcel that has a single-family residence on it. But other than that, single-family residence, the rest is commercial, industrial, or agricultural. And then immediately west of the parcel is the Winston-Salem Railroad. And then. And then immediately west of the parcel is the Winston-Salem Railroad, and then, uh, excuse me, immediately east of the parcel is the rail, the rail line, and then east of the rail line is, um, agricultural land. And then to both the north and the south of the parcel is commercial and industrial property, and specifically to the south is a marina and then a gun shop. And then to the north of the parcel is a marina and the Lexco Heating and Cooling Facility. And then, and directly west of the parcel is Highway Eight, and then west of Highway Eight is vacant property, and then, um, also the parcel that I mentioned that has a single-family residence on it. And so AT&amp;T will be located on the, the tower at the two hundred and ninety-five foot position so that it can continue to provide as much coverage as possible in the area. And there'll be room for AT&amp;T, for First Net, and then also, um, two additional carriers and likely more if more carriers, um, wish to locate on the tower. And so I've mentioned First Net a couple of times, and I just wanted to provide a little bit of information about First Net. First Net, um, entered into a twenty-five-year partnership, uh, which is a nationwide partnership with AT&amp;T to build the first nationwide wireless broadband network for first responders for use during times of disasters, emergencies, and also daily public service work. So the tower is not only important for AT&amp;T, but also, um, for First Net and the first responders in the area. And as part of our application, we provided, uh, a radio frequency justification report and radio frequency propagation maps, and what those, um, what that documentation shows is that with this new tower, um, AT&amp;T will basically be able to replace the existing coverage and then improve it, um, to some degree. Um, it's, it's mostly a replacement, but there will be some areas of improvement. And so coverage will be able to be continued along Highway Eight from Cotton Grove to Southmont, and then also in the areas around High Rock Lake. And the reason that, um, AT&amp;T will be able to improve the coverage to some extent is because their antennas will be able to be, uh, at a higher, um, elevation, they'll be at two hundred and, the two hundred and ninety-five foot position on the new tower versus the two hundred and sixty foot on the Crown Castle, um, Tower. So there will be some, some improvement in coverage in the area. Um, and when Parallel Towers was looking for, uh, location for the new tower, they, um, you know, they took great care to make sure that the, the location would be appropriate, it would not have any, you know, adverse impact to the area. And it isn't an ideal location because as I mentioned, it's, um, in a predominantly industrial and commercial area. And, uh, the setbacks are, the, the tower will be set back a hundred and fifty-two feet from the property to the north, a hundred and sixty-five feet from the property line to the south, which is east, which is the railroad, four hundred and three feet from the property to the west, which is the highway, and then seventy-two feet from the property to the south, but that's the same owner that owns the, the parcel for the tower. And so we've, as part of our application, we've also provided a fall zone report, and the fall zone report, um, states that in the very unlikely event that the tower were to collapse, that the tower would collapse, um, and fall entirely within that, um, ha, a quarter of a mile lease area. And so I'd like to move on to this, how to show how we have met the special use permit standards, and the first one in the ordinance is that the tower will maintain the public health, safety, and general welfare if located where proposed and developed and operated according to the plan submitted. And I think as the board knows, wireless service is in great demand, um, by people across the, the country and the state, and in Davidson County as well, as more and more people rely upon their cell phones and the services that are available with their cell phones. And also, um, good cell coverage or wireless coverage is, is really important for businesses in the area to keep them competitive. And so this new tower will allow the coverage for AT&amp;T to be maintained and continued, and it will also, um, ensure that there's connectivity to the tower that is to the north on the highway so that calls are not dropped between those two, um, uh, tower locations. And also, um, the, the residents of the county and those traveling through the area will have access to nine-one-one services during times of emergency. And then we've also provided, um, a radio, a radio emissions report that demonstrates that the tower will comply with all federal rules and regulations, including FCC standards and FAA standards. And again, this is a First Net site that will allow, um, broadband coverage for the first responders. And then I just did wanna point out that the, in related to First Net, that this, um, new tower that First Net will be on is consistent with the general statutes and Section one sixty A four hundred of the general statute states that it's the policy of North Carolina to facilitate the placement of wireless towers in all areas of North Carolina so that first responders can provide for the health and safety of all residents of North Carolina. So this is consistent with, um, policy of the state. And then the second standard that we have provided information about in the application is that the tower is listed as a special use in the Highway Commercial zoning district in which it's to be located, and that it complies with the regulations and standards in the ordinance, including the dimensional regulations and the standards for the cell towers. And so we've submitted a thorough and complete application, um, that we believe meets all requirements of the ordinance. Again, there is the one dispute, uh, one concern from planning staff about the existing Crown Castle, uh, Tower that I'll talk about in a minute, but that is the, the sole issue, um, I believe, about the application. And so, um, the only issue is whether AT&amp;T should be allowed to remove its antennas from the Crown Castle Tower, and that I'll be, as I mentioned, discussing in amendment, in a minute. But we've shown that a three hundred foot tower is permitted in Highway Commercial property with a special use permit. We've, um, complied with the requirement of providing a site development plan, and we've provided, um, all required information. For example, we have a landscape plan that's included, we've shown that there's room for AT&amp;T and at least two additional carriers, and there will be an eight-foot tall security fence around the compound. We provided information about the setbacks that I discussed this a minute ago, along with the fall zone report. Uh, we provided a structural report, and we've provided photographic simulations, and then we also provided the certification, um, that the tower will comply with all FCC and FAA standards. And then the next standard is that the tower will maintain or enhance the value of contiguous property, or that the tower is a public necessity. And, um, I believe that, um, wireless coverage is a public necessity in today's, um, today's world, but we went beyond that to show that the, the tower will not have any adverse effect, um, upon property values. Um, it, just to highlight what I mentioned before, the tower is located in an excellent location that'll have no adverse effect on the adjacent properties, it's in this, um, commercial and industrial area along the, um, Highway Eight corridor, and the tower will be buffered with landscaping. And then the tower is also gonna be a low-impact use. It is an unmanned facility, which means that it will gen, and it will generate very little noise, it'll have no odor, and because it's unmanned, it will have, generate very little traffic, only about, about two vehicle trips per month, and that's for maintenance purposes. So the tower will fit in well with the commercial and industrial and agricultural area. Um, in addition, we've, uh, we've passed up, um, a property report that's been prepared by Michael Berkowitz, who is here this evening, and he is a North Carolina certified real estate appraiser. And he's performed a market analysis and has provided his expert opinion that the tower will not hurt property values in the area. And then, um, also, um, it is my understanding that there has been no concern and, um, no opposition to the tower from any of the, um, nearby properties. So I think that the, the issue about, uh, property values, we've, we, we are complying with the, with the ordinance requirements, but there's no concern about impact to property values. And then, um, the last, um, the last provision is that the tower will comply with the general plans for the physical development of the county, and, um, the, the plans allow towers to be located with a special use permit in the, um, property that's zoned, um, Highway Commercial. And so the county has already made a legislative determination that towers with a special use permit are permitted in, um, the HC zoning districts. And so now I'll move on, now that I've, showed that we've met all of those requirements, I'll move on to what the real issue is.
Could I ask a question?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
On those findings of fact? What exactly does the new tower do that the tower that you're currently on doesn't do?
So it, the, the new tower will, I, I don't wanna overstate the improvement of coverage because it will improve coverage to some degree, but essentially it's continuing to provide, um, the coverage that's available. Um, but AT&amp;T's, um, plan is that it, it believes that it needs to remove the antennas from the existing Crown Castle, um, Tower. So this new tower will allow AT&amp;T to continue providing the same coverage with some improvement in coverage to the area.
I understand what you're saying, but the findings of fact, it, it says that, um, it's going to improve, and, and you said that the, the, um, amount of, uh, increased heights is about thirty feet?
That's correct.
That's not gonna improve.
So, um...
Thirty feet's not gonna do much to improve services.
Yeah, and there, the, um, I have some information about the, um, the elevation of the land, um, for the two towers, and because of the elevation, the height of the tower will actually be, will be higher, and if you can, if you can wait just a minute, I, I'll need to look at the numbers to refresh my memory.
Uh, can, before you go, this is a three hundred foot tower that you're moving off of, and it's a hundred and fifty foot tower or sixty foot tower that you're moving on?
No, it's, we, it is a two hundred and sixty foot existing Crown Castle Tower, and, um, eighteen, and the proposed tower's three hundred feet, so the tower is, um, taller than the existing tower.
Okay. But you, you had mentioned to, a great deal about the public necessity being the EMS and, um, law enforcement and all that, and it's my understanding that's being provided on the current tower?
No, my, um, um, the, the First Net, um, I, I checked into that this morning, and First Net is not currently on the existing Crown Castle, um, Tower, but it will be, um, on this new proposed tower, First Net will be, um, available, uh, will, will be able to provide broadband coverage on the new tower.
Is First Net available to be put on an existing tower?
Um, that may be a question for, um, Stephen Howard. Um, so I, I think that, do you wanna answer that, Stephen?
It is.
Okay. And that, would you like for me to fini, um, to proceed and tell you about the, um, to, to finish this, or would you, would you like to hear the answer first, and I can go back and explain the?
Repeat that?
Would you, would you like for me to finish my presentation and then ask questions, or would you like to hear the answer now?
Well, you had gotten to the point where you said moving on, so I thought you were gonna get, uh, leave what we were talking about here and go on to something else. Now you, 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 uh, pick and choose what you wanna do, but that's, that's where I had the question.
Okay. Stephen, would you like to answer?
Uh, good evening. My name is Stephen Howard, um, the area manager for real estate for AT&amp;T, um, do you need my address? Do you need my address?
Mm, no.
Um, at, uh, one thou, uh, one hundred South Eugene Street in Greensboro. Um, and your question is, could, could the existing tower, the existing Crown Castle Tower, could it support, uh, First Net if we were to install and upgrade our facilities there? Is that your question? Um, I don't know, we haven't applied to Crown, um, because of the, um, disadvantage of the, the rent we're currently paying at Crown.
Mm-hmm.
So the proposed, um, parallel infrastructure tower has a much better rent structure for us, so that is the tower we'd be looking to, uh, to co-locate on, but as to if it could, um, I don't know because we haven't made an application to Crown.
Okay, so you don't know this, I appreciate that.
What, before you get sat down, 'cause I don't know which one of you needs to answer this, but to Commissioner McClure's question, if you put this First Net system on the existing Crown Net Tower?
Yes.
Are they gonna, are you saying they would charge you more money for that as well, or is that just in the upgrades that you're wanting to do?
If, if the tower were to fail structurally, for example, we would have to pay, AT&amp;T would have to pay the modification cost for the tower, and the way that the current agreement, which is set to expire, is set, the current cost structure at the Crown Castle Tower is expensive, expensive enough so that AT&amp;T has asked to begin, to look for an alternative, which is what is before you this evening.
Okay.
I got a question here. I mean, I, I think I can see where you're going, I don't know how long it's gonna take to get there, but, um, anyhow, y'all signed a contract with Crown Tower, how many years ago?
It's approximately twenty-five.
Twenty-five years ago?
Yes, subject to check, but...
So, you know, somewhere, I guess you didn't cover yourself good enough for thirty years because that's why you're paying an increased rate on your tower.
No, I wouldn't, to be fair, sir, I wouldn't characterize it that way. We have a lot of master lease agreements with Crown, American Tower, and other companies, those leases expire over time, but the way that the current master lease agreement is with the Crown Tower, we're talking a significant difference in what we'd be charged, charged for, uh, the Crown site versus the parallel site.
And what you, evidently what you started out at, and where you're at now, has been a big increase in, um, in rental.
Yes, of course, over, over time, it, it has escalated.
Okay, so this tower here, pal, para, parallel towers?
Yes.
Um, what's to keep this from happening again in twenty-five years on this tower?
Well, uh, we have, we would sign a long-term contract, I mean, what's to prevent it? We have, uh, a different master lease with parallel that hasn't expired, that sets different terms. The, the difference really between the two agreements is that, and, is it okay?
Yeah, good.
So, was the current, the current model for leasing on towers, such as the parallel towers, what's known as the real estate rights, um, model, so we are allowed a certain amount of square inches on the tower, whereas the Crown site, it's à la carte, so anytime we put something up there, we have to pay. So it would be like, if you wanted to add, if you were renting an apartment, and you wanted to add another TV to the bedroom, you'd have to pay more rent, whereas instead of just paying for the apartment, you can put whatever you want in the apartment.
But I think you see where I'm going here, I mean...
Let me, if, if, if I, if I could, sir, the amount of money that AT&amp;T is looking to save over the, over twenty-five years, so the next twenty-five years, would be in excess of two million dollars in rent between the two, between the two sites, which is not insignificant. To, even to a large company like AT&amp;T, we've got projects like this throughout the state and throughout the country, so, and that, that's, I have a dozen or so this year, probably another eight or ten in my market for next year, and that's, that's just in, in my territory. Multiply that times all the different, uh, territories in the country, it's, you know, it adds up.
I've got a question, uh, for counsel. Uh, counsel, would this be setting a, seeing how we have in our ordinance about the distance between an existing tower, and we know that the tower is functional, just the operation or I guess the rent is the, the only objection for moving, um, doesn't seem like a basis for approval from me because it's within that close area. I'm, I'm just, if we accepted this, would that be setting a precedence for other people moving forward wanting to put something close? I'm just asking.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, I, forgive me, and I think that the several questions that have been asked by the board so far are really hitting the ultimate question here, and, um, I, I respectfully agree with my colleague that ultimately this comes down to a pretty narrow question for the board tonight, and a unique question for the board tonight. As always, she has prepared well in meeting all of the information required by the several standards. If you look back through the application, it is thorough and complete. Ultimately, the question, though, comes down to our zoning ordinance, and the requirements are standards that are set out in that zoning ordinance, and one of those standards identified as standard U is evidence shall be submitted to support of finding that no suitable existing facilities within the coverage areas are available for co-location. And what that does is to, if there's a tower there, and you can locate on that tower or co-locate on that tower, it's directing you to, to mitigate, or to, to migrate in that direction. And so the question for the board, I would respectfully tender, that you're gonna have to determine, is whether there is a suitable existing facility within the coverage area that's available for co-location. Now, from the...
Pretty much what you're saying is...
Pretty much what you're saying is the monetary, monetary does not, uh, establish deficiency in, in, in the operation of a tower.
The, the, the challenge for the board tonight is to determine what that language, that suitable existing facilities within the coverage area. Now, I, I anticipate that the applicant here is going to say that it is not suitable because of the additional cost that is incurred. And, and I'll certainly defer to her to make her own argument, but I think that's the ultimate question for the board.
The, that particular part of our zoning ordinance, we discussed that at length, um, before. And we were looking at water towers. We were looking at any, uh, kinds of, um, height towers or, um, equipment that could be used to put one of these companies on. And it wasn't, nothing was discussed about, um, money, obviously. It would be cheaper to put it on a water tower than it would be to build a tower. But, uh, the money was never, um, discussed. It was always the facility itself. So, I don't think that, that the, the money is, is part of what we had in mind when the zoning ordinance was drafted.
And to elaborate on what Commissioner McClure is alluding to, there was a committee set up. And this was adopted in nineteen ninety-eight, re-adopted in twenty-eleven, and then adopted again last year or two years ago with the one sixty D provisions. And the, the, the philosophy that come from the committee was that the government didn't want to get involved with the, with the, uh, monetary structure of the wireless industry. You heard Ms. Cameride, and, and I want to say that we've worked with Ms. Cameride on multiple occasions and the respect is mutual. Uh, she has done a wonderful job, but we just do disagree on this one piece, um, that the, um, you know, that we didn't want to get involved with the monetary aspect of it. She, she alluded to some, some ordinances have commercially reasonable terms in there. But we, we made a decision to stay away from that and let the industry kind of regulate itself.
So, are there other providers on this tower?
There are. And, um, I do know that other, other wireless carriers have a similar concerns. Um, and, and if this new tower, I don't, I can't speculate as to what would happen if this new tower is constructed. But, um, AT&amp;T is not alone in, um, in frustration about the, um, increasing costs, um, on the Crown Castle Towers. So, if, if I may just, uh, finish up, um, I, I actually agree with everything, um, that Mr. Frye said, except for perhaps our interpretation. But the, the issue before the board is very narrow and very limited. It is a question about, um, whether, uh, the Crown Castle, um, Tower with its exorbitant lease payments, which is, you know, as, uh, Mr. Howard mentioned, will be two billion dollars in excess over, um, a twenty-five-year period, which is substantial. Whether, um, that, whether the additional cost and the financial hardship can be considered when, um, determining whether there's a suitable facility. And, um, there, my position is, is it absolutely can be considered and that it should be presen-, should be considered. There's nothing in the ordinance that prohibits the county from considering financial hardship. And this is a, this is a really relevant, um, consideration. And, and frankly, I think that, um, circumstances have changed with the tower industry. And it's, it's important to keep up with, um, some of the things that are happening within the, the tower industry. And, and I think it's also important to, um, not hold wireless carriers like AT&amp;T hostage to, um, yeah, to, so Crown has no incentive to negotiate fairly or to, to provide commercially reasonable rates because they think that AT&amp;T and the other carriers have to stay on their, on their tower. And I don't think that they do. I think that the, the ordinance allows another tower to be, to be constructed. And I think that it's, it, this is an important consideration for the county as well because the, you know, two million dollars is, um, investment that could be provided elsewhere to improve coverage or services, um, you know, perhaps in the county, in the state, um, where, where it's needed. And that's important for the residents of North Carolina. And I, I also wanted to mention that AT&amp;T, um, does not, um, make the decision to remove its antennas from a tower and ask to construct a new tower lightly. It does it in only very limited situations that are particularly egregious. And then this is one of the, um, one of the egregious situations that AT&amp;T is willing to come forward and say, we need to move our antennas off the tower and we want, um, approval for a new tower. And, and AT&amp;T also wants to be a good corporate citizen in Davidson County. And it wants to find a solution. It doesn't want to just remove its antennas from the tower and stop, um, improving the, um, the services that it can provide, um, to the residents of, of Davidson County. So, what it's, what it's asking to do is to, for the, for the county to recognize that this is a unique situation. It's not prohibited by the ordinance and that it's egregious and allow AT&amp;T to not be held hostage. And I think that this application is also particularly compelling because there's no adverse impact to any of the neighboring properties. It's in a great location for a tower. You know, there's no one here objecting to a new tower because it's not, no one is concerned about it. It will have no adverse impact. And, um, also, uh, we're going to, you're going to hear, uh, we, we've presented an affidavit from Tim Brenner with AT&amp;T that's part of the application materials. And then Michael Walker is here, um, and he's with AT&amp;T. And he's going to, um, provide some, um, information to the board, um, about what I just mentioned, that AT&amp;T only removes its antennas from existing towers and looks to, to have a new tower constructed in very, um, extreme and limited situations.
So, I, I have a question real quick. The gentleman, um, alluded to the next twenty-five years could equal two million dollars, which equates to eighty thousand dollars a year. Is, uh, is that something that you were like being locked into? Or was there a new negotiation after the lease, a, a chance to renegotiate an additional lease? Has any of that been talked? And is this a concrete estimate of what they're saying the new lease would look like?
And I'll let, uh, Mr. Howard speak to that. But I do know that AT&amp;T has been negotiating with Crown Castle for some time. But I, I think he has more, um, information and details about that than I do.
If, if he's coming up on it, Lee, just from my, how far to stay within our ordinances? How far would a, a new tower have to be from this old tower?
See, that's, that's one of the, the unique things I think about the, the, uh, content of our special use permit application. We do not set a definite ring that, or a distance between wireless facilities because the, the ordinance is designed to promote an equal playing field for all wireless carriers. You know, we have a minimum of a three, uh, each tower has to be accommodating for three carriers. Let's say there's, and that, that tower's in a, a good location. Let's say there's a fourth carrier that, that wants to compete and needs to be in that location. If that fourth carrier can prove that they can't physically locate on the existing tower and that they're going to provide an improvement to their wireless services, which we directly equate to the, the good, the public health, safety, and general welfare of the citizens of the county, then we'll, uh, we'll entertain the application and then it has to go through technical review. So, we don't have a set fast rule of how close they can be. They have to meet those, they, they have to prove those, uh, submittals and findings.
So, so, so if this tower that's, uh, that's there now has some extra space on it?
Yes, sir.
Then no other tower can be put up till that space is used in.
Accurate, yes, sir. According to the ordinance.
Don't make sense, does it?
I'm sorry, there was a question, but I don't remember from whom. And I'm sorry, I don't remember.
You don't remember the question? Okay. So, you.
Well, you, you asked, I mean, I just want to make sure that I, I answered. So, you asked like, could it be, could the Crown agreement be renegotiated?
Well, it sounds like you already had it figured out, that the next twenty-five years was going to equate to two million dollars.
Right. And it's not, it's not a straight line calculation there. There are annual increases. So, it's not eighty thou-, it's not two million divided by twenty-five equals eighty. So, there is, there is a, 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 you know, the first year, the difference is roughly, uh, twenty, eighteen thousand dollars. But, but over time, with the way that the annual increases for the Crown Tower, the, the payments get quite disparate.
And this is a new lease that was negotiated, how long ago?
The Crown lease? This was based on the original master lease, which was signed twenty years ago, fifteen.
This is based on the original lease?
Right. But this, this is the agreement to which we are locked in.
Was that two million dollars, was that, um, over and above what the normal cost is?
That is the difference.
Or was that the total cost?
That is the difference between what we would pay. Yes, sir. The, the, between the next twenty-five years at Crown versus what we would pay with a parallel tower. Again, we have a different model now. The, the Crown Tower was originally built on, I'll call it à la carte pricing. You put this up, it's, they're going to charge you, you put X up, they're going to charge you Y, and then so on. Whereas this is a real estate model with a different escalator, to your point, with a different escalator. So, it's, we have rights to, it's either, subject to check, it's either twenty-five or thirty thousand square inches, which sounds like a lot, but it's generally, um, nine antennas and fifteen radios on, on the top of the tower plus some other hardware.
Well, I was on that committee that, in nineteen ninety-eight, believe it or not, that drafted that. And the whole idea was coverage area, and that was it. And we wanted to make sure that the coverage area was such that it would maximize, um, the ability of the towers to reach all the parts of county without having towers every twenty-five, thirty feet. So, we put that provision in there that if there was another, um, tower or structure that was nearby that you could locate on, then you wouldn't have another tower. And that was the sole reason of that. It was the coverage area. Now, I, I understand what you're talking about, it, the, the things have changed. But what's to keep from changing again in the next twenty-five years? And then what do we do? The, the, I'll let that rest. It just, it's just, you're talking about money and we're talking about coverage area. And that's what the zoning ordinance was drafted for.
Yeah, this, this new tower, that, so again, I, I understand, um, I understand, uh, what you're saying about the original intent. But things have changed. Um, and I think that this is a particularly egregious and limited situation. And, and I don't think that there's anything in the, the ordinance that prevents the, the board from considering this situation and allowing, and a, a limited, um, you know, I, I, every application has to be considered on its merits. I, I think that I would say one thing I would disagree with Mr. Frye about is that it would not be precedent-setting because every application would have to come before the board and you'd have to meet all of the requirements of the ordinance and, um, and demonstrate that you've met the special use, um, permit requirements as well. And I believe that we have met those, those provisions. And, um, and it would not create precedent because it, each application has to be considered individually. And this is a particularly egregious application. So, we, what we are asking the board to do is to consider that the ordinance doesn't prevent you from considering this extreme financial hardship and to allow, um, a reasonable remedy in this situation for AT&amp;T so that they can continue, um, providing coverage in this area of the county with a new, with a new tower. And my, so I, I don't want to belabor that too much, but that's essentially what our request is, is that we are asking for the county to find a solution for us that, um, that is reasonable, makes sense, and is permitted, is not prohibited and is permitted by the ordinance. Uh, and Michael Walker, I think he did have, um, some information to provide about, um, AT&amp;T's, um, you know, plans and how they, did you have a question before I bring Mr. Walker?
No, I, I was going to comment on the fact that I think when you say you disagreed with, uh, Attorney Frye, I think you may, are talking about two, two totally separate things. I think you're talking about the precedent set at, for application. And I think he's referring to the precedent that would be set by the findings. For example, you might, you yourself said that there were several carriers on this tower. Well, suppose the next carrier is dissatisfied as you are, wants to make application, put one, two, four hundred feet down from your tower. That's where the precedent may come in, in the findings, not the application itself.
And claim financial hardship.
Yeah, that's exactly right.
Yeah, and I think, I think though, that that would be, you know, from a practical standpoint, that would be, um, so extremely unlikely that it'd be impossible because the, the parallel tower provides reasonable lease terms. I can't say that the other carriers that are dissatisfied on the Crown Tower would want to, um, do the same thing that AT&amp;T is doing and move it to the, to the parallel tower so they could, um, you know, save some of the, um, not have to pay the exorbitant, uh, lease payments and could invest in their system more. But it is time-consuming, um, and it is expensive to build a new tower. So, um, so there, there would be a, an excellent solution if the other carriers, um, had concerns as well where they could move their antennas to the, to the parallel tower. But if, if it's acceptable, I think Michael Walker just had a, a couple of comments that he would like to make. And also, Michael Berkowitz is here, um, the, the appraiser. But I don't really think that there's an issue about impact of property values. So, to save the, the board's time, I, I would just ask that it be admitted into evidence, um, with, with no concern or objection about property values.
Ma'am, before you step away, when is this lease up?
The final term is actually in twenty twenty-three. If we, if we, you're talking about the Crown lease, of course.
Yes, sir.
Um, the, the final term is in twenty twenty-three. We'd have to, uh, there, there are holdover provisions and we'd have to continue to, uh, to hold over. And when you hold over, it's on the same terms and conditions.
I don't know, maybe there's a reason you're not wanting to say. But I mean, are we talking December twenty twenty-three, January twenty twenty-three?
I'm not saying because I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Okay, okay, okay. Thank you.
So, there's no opportunity?
In the next year is what you're saying? Within the next year?
Correct.
Okay.
There's no opportunity for a renegoti-, uh, renegotiation of a lease? There is.
I mean, I mean, no opportunity.
I, I think.
You know, it's impossible.
I think what we have to do is, is render findings based upon the ordinance and, and the, the funding and zoning. We can't really get into the personal contract between the two businesses.
Well, Mr., Mr. Chairman, with all due respect, that when, when counsel mentioned same coverage, that was a concern with me. You know, it'd be different if there was, uh, a totally new system that we had that was going to offer something for the citizens that we didn't have. But, um, I would have to side with staff on this, just from what I've heard thus far, with all.
Well, I think it's, I think it's pretty much what we're reduced to doing.
Mr. Chairman, forgive me for interrupting. I believe, um, counsel has some other evidence that she wants to put before the board. And so, I would suggest to the board at this point that we defer any discussion upon, um, a decision until that evidence is presented.
I think she says she wanted to bring it, Mike, was it Michael?
And then the, the second piece of, by Mike, just as a formality, she has tendered to the board, uh, to be received into evidence, that impact study. And, uh, I think if, if the board would, uh, just formally, uh, say that that has been received into evidence for the record.
We don't need, we don't need to hear impact studies. We, we've had, uh, since nineteen ninety-eight, the lawyers coming up and, and, uh, real estate folks coming up and saying that it doesn't affect the property value. So, we can accept that.
It's a very lengthy document. I'm sure it's very complete. Uh, a copy of it was tendered to each of the members of the board when this matter was called for hearing. Hearing no objection, I'll assume that the board has agreed to receive that into evidence.
Yeah. I, if you see anything on that, Debbie?
Just to make the record.
All right.
Go ahead, ma'am.
So, I'm, I'm sorry. I think just to answer, uh, Mr. Elliott's, uh, question about, or maybe it was Mr. Shore's, the, uh, the negotiation. So, the agreement does end next year and we would hold over. AT&amp;T and Crown are in negotiations, but there, there's no, I don't have any timeline for that. If, if, when, if the terms will be similar, I don't know if they'll be better than the parallel, uh, agreement. Uh, I tend to think not, but.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Walker, can you begin my citizen name, business address, please?
Sure. Michael Walker, two thousand and two, Piscatah Church Road, Greensboro, North Carolina.
And by whom are you employed?
AT&amp;T.
AT&amp;T.
Mr. Walker, did you have some information that you would like to provide to the board?
I did, thank you. Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to appear before you today. My name is Mike Walker, I am the Regional Director for AT&amp;T External Affairs. At AT&amp;T, we are committed to providing outstanding wireless service in Davidson County, to folks who live and work here, and folks just passing by. Today, we deliver mobile broadband to ninety-nine point eight percent of the country's geographic area, which encompasses one hundred percent of the population. That's the result of intentional investment in the technologies which pe- keep people connected here. We want to continue delivering excellent service and value for our customers. And, just like any company in a competitive business, that means we need to control costs. A few years ago, we began looking at our total capital costs. That analysis revealed that we were spending an alarmingly increasing amount each year on leasing tower space from a handful of tower companies around the country, particularly a company called Crown Castle. This may seem to be just a business issue, but it, it is actually a community and consumer issue. Every additional dollar we spend leasing tower space is a dollar we cannot use to expand or upgrade the communications infrastructure. For example, placing additional cell sites to improve coverage and capacity, or deploying wired and wireless broadband, including in the more rural areas of North Carolina. To address the problem, we launched a rent, a high-rent relocation program to identify cell sites throughout the country where we're paying exorbitant prices for occupying and modifying cell towers, and to advise us on opportunities where we might cut costs and invest in newer technologies in the communities. We have partnered with a company called Parallel Towers. We have determined that Crown, that the Crown Castle Tower in Davidson County is a tower that AT&amp;T must move its antennas off due to the exorbitantly high rent payments. The Crown Castle site that AT&amp;T's antennas are co-located on is located at sixty-nine oh five NC Highway Eight in Lexington. We have therefore submitted an application for a special use permit to construct a newer tower located at five-nine-eight-one NC Highway Eight in Lexington. In choosing where to locate our wireless equipment, co-location in existing towers is typically our first choice. Moving off an existing tower, as AT&amp;T is proposing to do here, is something that AT&amp;T will only do in limited circumstances. However, in situations such as this, where lease costs are exorbitantly high and are continuing to increase in ways that are not financially feasible, we believe we must build an alternate site. So let me put this in concrete terms. The rent on a Crown Castle site i- in Davidson is one point five times what we would pay if we are able to move on the Parallel Towers tower. In addition, Crown Cow- Castle hits us with high charges when our technicians must access the site for even minor modifications, which are known as per-touch fees. If we are able to relocate our facilities as we propose, we estimate a total savings of more than one to two million over twenty years. At AT&amp;T, we are excited about continuing to deliver advanced, reliable wireless service to the community. I am here today asking for your support as we work to free up stranded cost dollars which could be used for capital.
Thank you, Mike.
And again, um, I would ask also that our, the application be admitted, um, into evidence along with the report that has already been, uh, done so. And, um, we would appreciate, um, your consideration of the unique circumstances of this request. Um, and we are asking for approval so this new tower can be constructed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, is any of us that wishes to speak in favor of or in opposition? Come forward. All right, Mr. Crook?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I want to talk a little bit about the intent of the ordinance. And if Cory would pass out a document, make sure Ms. Camerit gets one. Um, the document that we're passing out is, is basically page V sixty-one through V sixty-three of our zoning ordinance. It has the sections highlighted for ease of, of, of notice for the board to, uh, indicate.
Yes, sir. You may want to wait until they have a copy.
I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Fred.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks, buddy.
Give you guys a chance to look at that. You, you've heard a lot of information tonight about technical aspects of the ordinance, and, and they do meet the technical aspects of the ordinance with respect to the measurables, the, the setbacks and things of that nature. There's no, we're not contesting, uh, the value, maintenance of value of property or anything along those lines. Um, what we are concerned about is precedent, because the intent of the ordinance that came out of the committee was to provide a level playing field for all wireless carriers, uh, to compete, as Commissioner McClure alluded to, based on hoop coverage, at a minimum impact to the citizens with respect to the minimal number of towers. Um, so, that's the intent of the ordinance, and that's why the two highlighted sections are in the ordinance. Um, they, they, the difficulty with trying to use financial hardship is, what degree of financial hardship can, is considered a hardship? Is it a dollar? Everyone, it's business. Everyone wants a, a cheaper rent. So, we, 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 where do we draw the line at what is considered, um, you know, financial hardship? And what is, what is, um, you know, where, where does, where does that go? Uh, where do we, where do we end up having to draw the line with, is, is, you know, they, they mentioned one point five times, uh, Mr., Mr. Walker mentioned one point five times more rent over, um, than the, than the parallel tower application. Do we draw it at, at one percent? Do we draw it at fifty percent? What, what do we, what, where do we draw the line for financial hardship? The, um, another thing that's very concerning is if, if the allegations, we haven't heard from Crown Castle. We don't, we, we, we heard the testimony of, of Mr., um, Mr. Howard, and I have no reason to believe that, that any of that's not accurate. So if that's accurate, Crown Castle, according to their website, has twenty-seven towers in Davidson County. They're a major player. And if, if this is indeed an issue, and, and to date, we haven't heard from any other carriers on this point, the precedent that we set tonight could produce like applications for other towers that, that are in Davidson County. Where the intent of the ordinance, based on the, the highlighted sections, is that if you can prove that there are no existable physical features that you can locate your antenna on, and you can prove that you are improving your coverage to the betterment of the public health, safety, general welfare of the citizens, then we send it to the measurables and the general standards, and the board hears the application. Staying out of the financial aspect of it, because we consider that just a, a can of worms that we don't really belong into, based on the philosophy of the ordinance. Um, I have, let's see. I have submitted, uh, a staff recommendation as part of the application, and, and since this is, uh, I, I, if you'll indulge me, I'd like to read it tonight, which I normally don't. Um, Parallel Towers LLC is requesting construct a telecommunications tower to relocate AT&amp;T's existing wireless equipment to the proposed location. A and T, AT&amp;T is currently located on a Crown Castle Tower approximately four hundred and fifty sou- feet south of the proposed site at sixty-nine-five NC Highway Eight. Said Crown Castle Tower is a two-hundred-and-sixty-foot lattice facility approved in June of two thousand, which currently provides space for an existing AT&amp;T wireless equipment. I think there's one other carrier on that facility, based on the photographs. Uh, the proposed tower would be a three-hundred-foot lattice tower with a four-foot lightning rod on the top. The intent of the Davidson County zoning ordinance, wireless telecommunications towers and facilities special use permit, is to promote the public health, safety, and general welfare of its citizens, while at the same time encouraging fair competition between carriers to improve and expand their wireless networks. The ordinance attempts to accomplish this by minimizing the number of towers required and balancing these goals for the industry and Davidson County citizens. Examples of this intent are listed on page V sixty-one under submittals number four of the zoning ordinance. Said submittal states documentation that no suitable existing facilities within the coverage area are available to the applicant. The ordinance reiterates this intent on page V sixty-three under standard item U. Evidence shall be submitted to support a finding that no suitable existing facilities within the coverage area are favorable for co-location. In the past, that's meant physical features, not, not the rent is too high. Uh, that's, that was the intent of the ordinance.
Mr. Crook, forgive me, I'm going to interrupt you.
Yes, sir.
You said are favorable for loco-location. I don't believe that's what the ordinance says.
The...
I believe it says are available for co-location.
Apologies, are available to the app, which section, uh, Mr. Frye?
You, you were, you were...
Under U.
U.
Evidence shall be submitted to support a finding that no suitable existing facilities within the coverage area are available for co-location.
Thank you.
Apologies, sir. Um, in staff's opinion, the intent is clear for the applicant to have to prove that they cannot locate on any existing elevated structures before a new tower build will be considered. This application is based on financial concerns instead of significantly enhancing or expanding AT&amp;T's wireless coverage. The applicant submits that Crown Castle charges an exorbitant fee and has a lengthy equipment upgrade review process that causes unnecessary delays. Staff understands the desire of AT&amp;T to relocate, but it's, is tasked with upholding the intent of the zoning regulations. According to part of the applicant's submitted information titled RF justification for AT&amp;T Wireless Site One Seven Four-Dash-Five-Two-Nine, it states, and I'm quoting this from their documentation, "There may be a slight difference, but overall, the coverage will not significantly change by the, the relocation." If approved, this would be a precedent-setting application. Staff cannot recall ever approving a new tower build based on operating costs. If approved, this may create a real estate battle between tower owners to lease space to carriers and proliferate additional tower builds countywide. This is clearly not the intent of the ordinance. Therefore, staff will recommend denial of the application based on submittal four and standard U of the wireless telecommunications tower and facility, uh, special use permit not being met. And if, if the board decides to deny the request tonight, general standard, under general standard number two, where it speaks to all requirements and conditions being met, staff feels that that would be the appropriate, um, general standard to, to deny the application on. Because we feel that submittal four and standard U are not, not met.
Yeah, I mean, Tyler, did you say Crown has in Davidson County?
According to their website, Commissioner Trull, which is, uh, crowncastle.com backslash infrastructure slash solutions, they have twenty-seven towers in Davidson County. I think there are around sixty total, so they, they're a major player here. So if this, if this is, sets precedent that we can, and, and Ms. Camerit's right, each tower, each application will have to rise and fall on its own merit. But, to date, we, we've never, um, every time we've approved a new site, it was to better competition with respect to the wireless coverage, which improves the public health, safety, and general welfare for the citizens of Davidson County.
So you don't know if AT&amp;T's on any of the other Crown sites or anything, though, do you?
I, I do not, but I, with, with twenty-seven towers, and, and every one of those had to be accommodating for three carriers, I know there's a multitude of, of wireless antenna on there.
Absolutely. Okay, anybody have any further discussion about the board?
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question of the witness? May I ask a question of him, please?
Sure.
Mr. Crook, in a moment, the board is going to be considering each of the general standards and will be voting on each of those. It is the recommendation of staff that the board would approve standard one, three, and four. Is that correct?
I, I think there's no question that, that standard one, three, and four are met. We, we feel that standard two is not met.
And the effect of, if the board were to find that it would deny standard two, then that would lead ultimately, in the fifth vote, to a motion to deny the special use permit?
That is accurate. Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. That's all I have.
So included in that, if you, if a motion were made to deny the special use permit, there would just be reference to number two?
No, sir. I think as it is set out, we would be asking for the board to have a motion and a second to either approve or deny each of the standards, and we would work through each of those votes individually. But then, if one of those standards were to be denied, then the final vote, which would be to either approve or deny the special use permit, um, the recommendation would be that it would fail, because not all four of the standards had been met, as is required by our ordinance.
Except if one, three, and four were met.
And that is, that's the determination that this board will make when we go through each standard individually.
Okay.
Yeah, but that's just, I just wanted to, to be in the record, the recommendation of staff.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Let me ask you this, Chuck. If we deny it, why do we have to go through each, uh?
We're, we're building the record, sir. We're trying to establish what is the basis for the board's approval or denial of the...
I got you.
Okay. No further discussion. The fair Republican hearing closed. Mr. Crook, will you read through the necessary four standards, and ask for a vote for each one?
Yes, sir.
And before you get started, reduce a few of these...
Madam Clerk, I think there is something unique about this. We need to know for each of the motions, the particular vote of that commissioner.
That is, we can do that.
Thank you.
Forgive me. Okay, um, ready to proceed? Okay, um, general standard number one, "The use will promote the public health, safety, and general welfare if located, were proposed, and developed, and operated according to the plans submitted." Staff, staff feels that if the tower were constructed, it would continue to provide the same, basically the same wireless coverage that it provides now, which we have always tied to the public health, safety, and general welfare.
Okay, do I have a motion and a second?
I make a motion to approve number one.
Second.
Okay. Got a motion. And you want that verbal?
We're doing these verbal.
Do you want a roll call?
We can do roll call, that way I've got, okay. Commissioner Elliott?
Yes.
Commissioner McClure?
Yes.
Commissioner Shores?
Yes.
Commissioner Trull?
We did.
Commissioner Yates?
Yes.
Commissioner Walker?
Yes.
Chair Shell?
Yes.
Mr. Crook?
Okay, the general standard number two, "The use which is listed as a special use in the district in which it is lo- it is proposed to be located complies with all required regulations and standards, including the provisions of Article Four of this ordinance unless greater or different regulations are contained in the individual standards for that special use." Staff would, uh, submit that we feel that this standard does fall short and that the application does not meet number four under the wireless telecommunications tower and facility greater than a hundred and sixty feet, special use permit requirements on page V sixty-one, uh, under submittals number four, and also on page V sixty-three of, of the same documentation, uh, under U, that requires suitable, uh, evidence that a suitable facility, evidence shall be submitted to support a finding that no suitable existing facility within the coverage areas are available for co-location.
Okay, can I have a motion and a second to approve or deny standard two?
Motion denied.
I'll second. Motion denied. Commissioner Trull, second, uh, Commissioner Yates, roll call?
Okay, Commissioner Elliott?
Yes.
Commissioner McClure?
Yes.
Commissioner Shores?
Yes.
Vice Chair Trull?
Yes.
Commissioner Yates?
Yes.
Commissioner Walker?
Yes.
Chair Shell?
Yes.
Do we need to have, uh, Mr. Crook, do we need to have the...
Do we need to have, uh, Mr. Crook, do we need to have the, uh, page V sixty-one, four, and the other as part of that motion that we made?
I think when the order is prepared, it would be referenced, and the board certainly can take notice of that as being part of the ordinance.
We can make sure we definitely include that in the order, yes, sir.
Madam Chair, I mean, uh, would you read back that motion?
It'd be denied because it falls short and did not meet page V sixty-one.
Okay, that's, okay. I just want to make sure, yes, was the correct answer that the board was looking at.
About the suitable facility availability.
Okay, all right. Mr. Crook on number three?
Yes, sir, thank you. That, the general standard three reads that the use will maintain or enhance the value of contiguous property or that the use is a public necessity. You've heard from Karen Hammerite that she considers this a public necessity, and they've also submitted an impact study, um, that is beyond refute, that, that they do maintain, you know, value of property. That's the standard, is maintenance of property, and staff has no, uh, no debate with that issue. So we think it's, it's met.
Okay. Can I have a motion and a second to approve or deny standard three?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve standard three.
Commissioner Shores?
Second.
Second. Commissioner McClure, roll call.
Commissioner Elliott?
Yes.
Commissioner McClure?
Yes.
Commissioner Shores?
Yes.
Vice Chair Trolle?
Yes.
Commissioner Yates?
Yes.
Commissioner Walker?
Yes.
Chair Shell?
Yes.
Okay, that's general standard number four, that the use is in compliance with the general plans for the physical development of the county as embodied in these regulations. The ordinance lays out the process to, to request and be approved for a special use permit by, uh, in the HC district. So sta- and, and the applicant has submitted that the information that's required for that, so we would agree that general standard four is, is met.
And a motion, second, to approve or deny the standard four?
Motion to approve.
Commissioner Walker? Commissioner Trolle, second. Roll call?
Commissioner Elliott?
Yes.
Commissioner McClure?
Yes.
Commissioner Shores?
Yes.
Vice Chair Trolle?
Yes.
Commissioner Yates?
Yes.
Commissioner Walker?
Yes.
Vice, or Chair Shell?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Go ahead.
May I have a motion and a second to either approve or deny the special use permit request?
At this time, it would be appropriate to make a motion to deny the request on the finding, general standard number two, not being met.
Okay. Motion to deny? Or is that correct? Is that what it is?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Commissioner McClure, you have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Trolle? Got on your clicker. Motion going to closed session?
Thank you.
I'm gonna move.
Thank you, Lee.
Thank y'all. That one was not, well, not easy tonight.
Okay. All in favor here?
The sun is shining brightly. The trees are growing lush. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies. The rain is falling. The leaves are rustling. The birds are singing. The sky is full of blue skies.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion we go back into session.
Okay.
Okay.
Chairman, the Board considered three separate matters in closed session. The first was personnel. The Board gave the manager direction for further action. The second matter was with regard to attorney-client, and the Board was informed of a settlement that was reached by counsel in that matter entitled Roy Walter Wolf II., plaintiff versus Davidson County, self-insured. A copy of the report of settlement with that plaintiff has been tendered to the clerk to be included in the minutes of this meeting. And then finally, in closed session, the Board considered three economic development matters, four of them involving Sky Aviation Maintenance and Project Garden. The Board directed that there be a call for a public hearing at a subsequent board meeting, which will be considered on the next board agenda. The third matter, Project Zeus, was for informational purposes only. Thank you, sir.
Motion, sir?
Motion.
Set.
Ah.
Set.
Ah.
Set.